He's coming on right now.
Okay. Give him a couple of seconds. Show us the pace. Is he here? There he is. Okay. We've got everybody. So Chief, if you'll just affect a little, please.
Ma'am. Ready? Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, please, Yana. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Mayor Protentren. Here. Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Yana. We've got a few presentations and proclamations. Our first one is Constitution Week and Ash is actually going to be the one to receive the proclamation. So I'll read that now. In recognition of Constitution Week, September seventeen through twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, where as the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government repub- decade rule by law. And where on September seventeen to seventeen marks the two-hundred-and-three-four anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the constitutional amendment. Where as a fitting and proper record, official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to patriotic celebrations which will commemorate and where a public line like fifteen guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating seventh, September seventeen through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Su Long, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one to be Constitution Week in the City of Fortuna and ask for citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen-eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the garden, this guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost rights we regain. Sign the seventh day of September, twenty-twenty-one, City of Fortuna, State of California. Becky, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Thank you. On behalf of the Eel River Valley Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I accept this proclamation from Sue Long, Mayor, and the City of Fortuna, honoring the signing of the United States Constitution and in recognition of Constitution Week. We appreciate your signing the proclamation and your visible support of the Constitution. We invite you to join us at the Veterans Hall or wherever you are to ring a bell or pause for one minute on September seventeenth at one o'clock PM, the time and date of the signing of the Constitution in seventeen-eighty-seven at Independence Hall in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Thank you again, Sue Along, for the proclamation signing. Respectfully yours, Becky Hash, co-chairman of the Constitution Week Committee, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you, Becky, and for tonight. We appreciate it and we're glad that we can view.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You so much. Bye.
You're welcome. Say or sign off, whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have introduction of new police officer Jerome. Jerem? Is that spelled wrong? Is it Jeremy Mullen?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's spelled different.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Long and honorable counsel. It's actually my distinct pleasure to introduce J.J. Mullen tonight. He is the newest Fortuna Police Officer. I'd just like to, before I kind of read his bio, say, you know, we are extremely fortunate to have a lateral officer with J.J.'s experience. He comes to us from the Eureka PD and joined our rank and file here within the last few days. So I was just have been very impressed with J.J. From the moment I met him, he has an outstanding set of values and an impressive work ethic. So I have high hopes for him. I know he'll be a great addition to the community and to the police department here. And I had some help from J.J., so I just kind of wanted to give the community a little bit about his background. So J.J. was born in Ukiah, California. He grew up on his family's ranch in Neyland. He attended Eureka High, where he was a member of the Eureka High School FFA program and also was a member of the District Two High School Rodeo Team. And this was kind of a common theme for J.J. Because after he graduated high school in two thousand thirteen, he attended the Feather River Junior College, where he was again a part of the college rodeo team and he traveled the country competing in professional rodeos. And I kind of commented on this. It is swearing in for anybody who's interested and would like to spend the time as I have. J.J. has some some pretty interesting scars and stories to share. So take the time to catch up. He's had quite the rodeo experience. Also, whether while he was at Feather River College in two thousand sixteen, he earned two degrees, one in administrative justice and also an agricultural business degree. After that, he moved to New Mexico and actually started his career working as a correctional officer with the San Juan County Adult Detention Center. He moved back to Humboldt County in two thousand seventeen and worked for the Humboldt County SO as a correctional deputy and then was hired by the Eureka Police Department in two thousand nineteen. So J.J.'s hobbies include hunting, fishing, and spending time with the lake and spending time in his family's ranch. So in a nutshell, that's a little about J.J. I've invited him here tonight to say a few words and address the council. So J.J., if you'd like to do that, this would be the time.
Yeah, definitely. Big thing, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity, you know. Hands down, I believe, Fortuna Police Department is probably one of the best departments in California and ultimately best department in Homer County for what it offers from the town, the community support, and even the department, you know, it's it's a place to be if you want to be a police officer and I'm so blessed and grateful for this opportunity to get to work Fortuna. And I know my family and my fiance is just really happy that this is this is happening in our lives. So just want to say thank you, guys, for giving me this opportunity. I'm extremely blessed and happy for it.
I think we feel the same way about having you on board, J.J. So thank you for being here tonight and for coming to Fortuna. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks, J.J.
On board.
Our next presentation is Federal Emergency Management Agency remapping the update for Hillside Creek presented by our city engineer, Brandon Burke.
Mayor Long, I'm going to just step in here and introduce your next speaker. So actually, we have Brett Vidian with GHD, who's going to be presenting this item. Brett has been working on this project, I believe, since two thousand thirteen, so about eight years. He helped with the design, modeling, and construction management. There's been a lot of folks, both with the City of Fortuna and with our consultants at GHD, who helped deliver this project. Again, this has been over a ten-year, ten-million-dollar modeling projects where the city attracted a lot of grant funds and we're at the we're just we're just across the finish line and Brett's going to share with you a little bit of information about the floodplain remapping and how that's going to help the citizens of the City of Fortuna and reduce some of the costs for some folks for flood insurance. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Brett.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. This is. And thanks, honorable mayor, mayor and council members. It's it's a big honor to be here talking about the remapped floodplain. As the city manager pointed out, I started on this project around two thousand thirteen and way back when when councilmember Losi was was the mayor, I think, and I remember giving a presentation there and lots of you were were a part of the council. So it's a it's a real honor to kind of bring this together and and show you where we are now. So I will just share my screen here. And okay, see the screen, okay? All right. So, yeah, so as as city man pointed out, there's been an update to floodtrans- rate maps as a product of the Corner Creek and Hillside Creeks flood control project. So this means there is reduced flood risk with the implementation of the project. So I'm just going to walk through a little bit of the history and then more get to the the kind of frequently asked questions and what does it mean for about one hundred and seventy property owners or parcels in Fortuna and next steps for them. So just looking at a little bit of history, so this is kind of showing a comparison of the aerial photography way back in nineteen eighty-two, how we kind of went from first identification of this project back in the first storm during master plan to where we are now, basically bringing the high-risk flood zone to within the creek channel and significantly reducing flood risk for for property owners, which also kind of plays into, well, it does play into the insurance rates. So back in nineteen eighty-two, it was first identified. And then in two thousand nine, the city invested in some planning, some planning studies, hydrology and hydraulics, so looking at the the rainfall and the flow in the creeks to figure out what are some options to to re- to reduce flood, the flood hazard. So this was really the the catalyst for getting funding. In two thousand twelve, the city was awarded funding through the Department of Water Resources Prop One E. Grant for the design permitting and outreach. The city also was able to utilize redevelopment funds to as matching funds for this, funds that otherwise would have that the state took back. So you're able to use those funds for matching funds. And then in two thousand fifteen, we the the city received additional funding for project implementation from the Department of Water Resources Urban Streams Restoration Grant Program. Construction first started in two thousand sixteen. That was the reach of Roanoke Creek from Twelfth Street to the high school and back almost up to Fort- for Busco Lumber. Then in two thousand seventeen was big construction through the residential area from Smith Lane or for Busco all the way up to Main Street. And then in two thousand eighteen, the city was awarded additional funding through FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant through Fisheries Restoration Grant Program and then utilizing the Measure E funds as as matching funds. Then two thousand nineteen, construction of Twelfth Street and Hillside Creek when Fortuna Boulevard was reduced to one lane each way and quite a bit of traffic control there in two thousand nineteen. And then since the completion, we worked with FEMA, closely with FEMA to revise the flood insurance rate map. So it's not a simple feat to revise the flood insurance rate ma- maps. It's a pretty rigorous process of hydraulic modeling to really demonstrate the, you know, you're using the best available science and everything is consistent with the with the National Flood Insurance Program. So rigorous review to make sure that we're accurately portraying the flood risk. So the revised flood maps became effective on September third. So that was just last week on on Friday. So moving forward, these are the the maps that that dictate flood insurance rates and the high high or high to low-risk zones. So a couple bullet points here. You can see on the on the left, this is the revised map and we'll get into some details, but the Roanoke Creek and Hillside Creek projects reduced the FEMA, the FEMA high-risk flood zone to within the creek channels. So where you see in this graphic where it was white, that used to be the 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 high-risk zone that has now been reduced to within the Hillside Creek Channels at Channel and the Roanoke Creek Channel. So and that extends basically all the way up from Carson Woods Woods Rose for Roanoke Creek down through Roanoke Park, across Main Street, then down along Stillman Way, kind of parallels Fortuna Boulevard, winds around between Cal Fire and for Busco and then down along kind of the the cul-de-sacs of South Fifteenth Street and Meadow Brook Lane in that area. So all within the the channel, there is an overflow swale that goes kind of behind where George's glasses over back towards the high school. That swale is a part of the the high-risk risk zone and then within the Hillside Creek Channel. So with the implementation of the of the flood control projects, the flood risk to approximately one hundred and seventy properties was reduced from high-risk down to low or medium risk. So this means that flood insurance premiums may be reduced or no longer required. And the property owners can ask their insurance agent to convert their existing policy to a lower-cost policy or may no longer be required to have a policy at all if they choose. So all affected property owners in the coming weeks will receive a letter from the city with with an explanation of the changes to the flood risk map and answers to frequently asked questions and some contacts and resources that they can look into. And then along with the letter will be a map of their properties showing the reduced flood risk zone. So they can use these maps and the online tools to go to their insurance providers to request the reduced rates. So this information will also be posted on the city's website. And we and the link for the link for that or the the website address will be within the in the letter. So going into a few just kind of frequently asked questions or what we anticipate to ask. So, you know, does this so for those of property owners receiving this letter, does this mean properties are no longer at risk of flooding? To know, it doesn't mean that your flood risk is no longer exists. It's just that the risk is significantly reduced. Anywhere in in Fortuna or anywhere for that flood in a big enough storm. But this risk has been basically reduced to below one percent in any given year, and I'll give a little more information on that. So the one percent special flood hazard area floodplain, which is shown in the graphics, or sometimes we refer to it as the hundred-year storm or the one percent annual chance storm is a representation of what's the chance in any given year that a storm of that size occurs. So you can think of it, if you're, you know, at bingo night with the bingo roller and you have a hundred ping pong balls in the roller, one of those ping pong balls is red and you roll that once on, let's say, January first each year, what's the chance that that red ball comes out? So it's a one in one hundred chance or the one percent annual chance. That could you could roll that red ball could roll out on in in two years in a row, or it could roll out and then you get, you know, the the blank ping pong balls for five years and then the red one rolls out. So it's just in any any given year, it's a one percent chance. And so what the projects have done is reduce that to some areas are now in the five-hundred-year or a point-two-percent chance. So think of that 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 ping pong spinner or the the bingo spinner as having five-hundred ping pong balls in there and one red ball. That's your point-two-percent chance. So a little overview of what the the maps look like. So the white or kind of grayish area is the old special flood hazard area before the the Roanoke Creek Project and Hillside Creek Projects were implemented. So that was what flood insurance rates were based on. But then as of September third, the new special flood hazard area for that one percent risk is again within the creek channels. And then the new point-two-percent or the five-hundred-year floodplain. So sometimes there are some considerations for development in this kind of lower-risk area that is shown in the kind of the purple polygon with the dashed border. So another frequently asked question might be, what about the flood insurance I've already paid for this year? So if your building is no longer in the one percent special flood hazard area, property owners have the option of getting a refund for the unused portion of their policy subject to their lender's approval. So property owners need to reach out to their their lender and their insurer and and notify them of the changes using the information that the city will send out. And then they should get reimbursed for the unused portion. It's been my experience working with other kind of private citizens that when they have been shown to have a a letter of map change or it the risk has been reduced, that that has been the case. And so the property owners may apply for a refund through the insurance agent that wrote the the policy through the National Flood Insurance Program after the letter of map revision becomes effective, which was this past Friday. Another frequently asked question may be, what if part of my property is in the floodway or high-risk zone? Also, you know, basically that the creek goes through the property, but that their their home or their buildings are not in the in that in that high-risk zone, is there a requirement to have flood insurance? So you can see an example of that on the screen here where the creek kind of meanders along the property boundary. The buildings are outlined in orange. And you could see that they're in the old one-hundred-percent flood or one-percent floodplain, no longer in that that the the updated one that is high-risk. So if your structures and or your home are not located within this blue area, the high-risk flood zone, there is not a requirement for flood insurance under the National Flood Insurance Program. So where can you find more information about flood insurance? So again, there is still some risk. It has just been significantly reduced and there isn't the requirement to carry it for federally backed mortgages. But find out more information from your insurance agent about purchasing flood insurance that's right for you. And to find an insurance agent, you can go to www.floodsmart.gov or contact the FEMA mapping and insurance exchange at one eight seven seven three three six two six two seven. And the official website for the National Flood Insurance Program is www.floodsmart.gov. And this website has a bunch of helpful resources for for customers and for insurance agents. The last thing is where can you find updated flood maps? So you'll be sent some, the property owners will be sent information. You can also go to the FEMA Flood Map Service Center and you can search by an address. Here's an example of what that looks like. You can type in a specific street address and that will put a marker on a map and show you exactly where that is in relation to your to to the to the flood risk zones. So property owners can use that along with with insurers and and lenders. So that is the overview I have. I I'm happy to answer any any questions that you may have.
Does anyone from the council have questions for Brett?
I have a comment.
Good.
I just want to thank you very much for all your hard work. I know you've been working on this for a lot of years. My first met Merritt, Merritt was on this project, I think, working with you before he came to the City of Fortuna. So this is a big asset to the City of Fortuna and thank you so much for all your work on it.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. For the public, if you visit the city's website, you get a lot of that information.
I can't see how to hand up and comment.
With the screens, I can't see everybody. Sorry, Mike.
That's okay. Brett, thank you for your presentation. It was excellent. This certainly has been a long haul project incoming. It doesn't seem that many years ago, though, that I remember water rushing down Fortuna Boulevard, across Fortuna Boulevard into many of those businesses all along Fortuna Boulevard. And hopefully, none of that is ever going to happen again. So we we really appreciate all your hard work and effort and as I say, this is a great news for those one hundred and seventy owners of those parcels. And it's it's just an excellent hard work on everybody's part. Merritt, I I just have to commend the city staff for the the job that they've done and the cooperation that that you've given GHD and and just to to have this whole project completed. It's a it's a great thing. So thank you.
Thanks. I guess the only the only thing that I would that I would add is that also kind of a recognition to the property owners who who, you know, were working with the city and it was not easy always to go through some of that construction. But yeah, they, you know, saw the the benefits of the project and and worked and worked with us to to get that in. So, you know, all the affected property owners gave a gave a lot for this, too.
You you are right.
You you are right. I I I'm sure that most of the council people heard from several of the property owners along the side and and they did, they put up with an awful lot, but it's well worth it at this point.
Mayor Long, could I make one more comment too?
Of course.
I I just wanted to say that, you know, there's a number of folks who look who worked on and led this project. And I wanted to recognize a couple of them that are on Kevin Carter. He served as a project manager when I was working as a consultant on this project. Jeremy Savela, which he he also led this project before handing it off to Brett. And then Brendan Burner, the engineer, helped finish up the last couple of phases. And then he worked with Brett to really put together this public outreach plan. And, you know, we're looking forward, you know, we we could have just stopped and said, hey, the flood plain is complete. But sending out those letters will give all the homeowners a chance to engage your insurance companies and lenders and to actually save the dollars on that that flood insurance. So, you know, once we get these letters out, again, I I received emails from a couple of property owners today and and people are anxious and they've been waiting to get a lot of inquiries. So we are at the last step of getting the word out and then just answering questions until everybody's got their policy straightened out. So it's really nice to be at this point. It took a long time. And again, there's a lot of people who contributed to this. So I apologize if I forgot somebody, even the council having decided whether we reroute the creek or enlarge it. There was some really tough questions that had to be answered to get this done. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Well, and the consultants and you, Merritt, made that easy to decide because you really presented all the reports and all of the projects and all of the options very well. And so that always makes it an easier decision for us. So thank you all. Appreciate it, Brett. Thanks for coming down and giving us our update. And I think we have some really happy property owners. So all right. Moving on to oral comments from the public, there should be a number on your screen that you can call if you would like to address the council about anything that's not on the agenda. And while we're waiting to see if anyone calls in, we'll go ahead and go to our consent calendar. We have three items tonight, City Council minutes from August 16th, report of dispersments and the approval of an annual contract with Mercer Fraser Company for a minor street paving, maintenance and repair project, which is resolution 2021-28. Does anyone wish to pull any item? All right, seeing none, someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent calendar items A through C.
I'll second.
Hey, guys, you need to speed it up a little bit. That was not that hard. All right, we have a motion in a second. Sienna? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. I see no one on the Zoom call with their hand raised. Sienna, did anyone call in for oral comments?
I see no new callers. All right. Or attendees.
We will close oral comments and move on to our city council discussion discussing solid waste franchise agreements and mandatory solid waste collection. Merritt?
Thank you, Mayor Long. I have a brief presentation and I just wanted to really get the council's opinion and and concurrence before proceeding on the important work of looking at our franchise agreement and considering how we address some of the regulatory issues in front of that. So with that, I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to share. Pulling that up now. Can you see that? Okay, Mayor Long?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to run through a little bit of the background on the franchise agreement and some of the SB 1383 regulations. We've spent a bit of time on this in the past, so I'm not going to review those in great detail. So if you have any questions, I'd be able to answer those either as we go through or at the end, up to you. So the discussion item really is what I'm looking for is direction from the council to initiate work on to update the city's solid waste franchise agreement with Recology and and include universal collection in that franchise agreement. Some of the provisions of the franchise agreement would require me to work with the city attorney. Some of the things that are included in a franchise agreement profit and other types of industry information, you know, making sure that the city gets a competitive agreement when we do that. So really, that's what I'm looking for. And I also want to mention, I do have some representatives from Recology, Linda Wise. I saw her on the call and I believe Julia Mangan is also on the call. So they might be able to answer some questions if if you have those of Recology. A little bit of background, this was last presented on March 21st, 24th, 2021. We reviewed the solid waste franchise agreement and new regulations for organic reuse and recycling that were imposed on the city by the state through SB 1383. So first of all, franchise agreement overview. What is a franchise agreement? A franchise agreement is a negotiated contract between a municipality and a solid waste collection provider that grants provider with exclusive right to serve customers. It typically includes a period of service and a fee remitted back to the municipality. Those are called franchise fees and they're authorized under Government Code Section 66755, which really says that it's within the cities, within the public interest to allow local agencies to make adequate provisions for solid waste handling. So that's why the city gets to decide what happens for solid waste collection. Again, really to avoid nuisances that that could happen in the community, whether it's accumulation of trash or 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 just how solid waste and recycling can best be dealt with. The history goes back quite far with the existing franchise agreement and started in 1995 with an agreement with Yule River Disposal. It was amended a few times to address some of the new regulations and requirements from the state that came through. It was amended in 2005 to include single stream restrike recycling service and provisions to address AB 939 waste reduction goals and extended the franchise agreement until December of 2020. Green waste was incorporated into the franchise fee in 2010 and the franchise fees were also increased from about 2% to 5%. There was an automatic extension in 2020 if the provisions of AB 939 were being complied with. And so that's where we are currently is that we have until a franchise agreement with 2025 and until 2025 with Recology. So now we're looking to do an amendment to comply with some of the organics regulations, which are just now being enforced and imposed upon the city. A little bit of the regulatory background on those regulations. Some of the regulations were already in place, again, Assembly Bill 341 and 1826. Those were more focused on businesses that generated over four cubic yards and required them to arrange for organics collection services. And then also it had a goal of reducing organics waste by 75% by 2020. And for the general public, AB 939 required each city or county to achieve 50% diversion. That's the one I mentioned a moment ago. In the current legislation, which is affecting the city that we're working to comply with, SB 1383 established targets to receive to achieve a 75% reduction in landfill organic waste by 2025. So how's the state mandating that the city do that? Here, these these tiles that you see on this screen are the basic actions that are going to be required or required of the city. And this is a particularly useful graphic I keep coming back to. But the first one is the city is required to provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses. And really, that's one that would really fall within our franchise agreement. The city is going to be required to establish an edible food recovery program, conduct education and outreach to the community, to share with them the programs and the requirements. Procure, the city is going to be required to develop policies to require the procurement of recyclable and or and recovered organic products. And then also secure access to recycling and edible food recovery. And then the city also has to enforce this. So the state's not going to enforce this. They said, city, you're going to monitor for compliance and conduct enforcement to get the job done. So that here's the timeline that the state is looking at. And I'll just say right off the bat that the city is not going to be able to comply the legislation but by the timeline, but we are going to make significant progress, which I think will allow the city to avoid seeing enforcement action. But the legislation was enacted in September of 2016 and then the regulations were not adopted until 2020. And we were given until the end of 2021 to to really be in compliance. So very short timeline, it took a lot longer to take to 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 develop the rules than the city had to really put programs in place to to comply. And the ultimate in January 1st, 2024, 2024, regulations will require local governments to start enforcing the new mandates. And the goal is by 2025 to see a 75% cent reduction in organics disposal and a 20% increase in edible food recovery. So one of the questions that's that's come up in that we've asked the state specifically is, you know, why, why is universal collection required? And this this slide does speak to it somewhat, but in this, the last couple of slides have come from state presentations on SB 301383. But what the state has said is if there's not a regional facility that can take all the trash and recyclables and sort the organics at the facility, then a three container source separated collection service is required. So you'd have, you know, your regular gray trash bin, you'd have a green waste and organic waste collection. And then you also have a blue recycling. So there's been a number of letters that the cities received that correspondence that Cal Recycle had with other communities in reinforcing their interpretation of this requirement. I don't think it's been tested by any case law, but right now we're being told that that is how Cal Recycle is interpreting the regulation. So some of the considerations, again, the jurisdictions are required to provide organics collection service and other programs by January 1st, 2022. Again, we're not going to, we're not going to meet that timeline. But what we will be able to do is demonstrate significant progress and the intention to to comply. If a jurisdiction does not have a high diversion of organic waste processing, a three bin collection system were required, that's what I just mentioned a moment ago. And then a jurisdiction must demonstrate they have made a substantial effort to be eligible for a two to three year extended compliance timeline. And so that's what we're hoping for. And some of the things that have to be done include providing adequate staff resources to meet obligations under SB 1383 to provide funding and then to adopt an ordinance. And the other part of that is if we have an ordinance and we also have to update the franchise agreement. So we have the method to have a contractor collect those organic ways. So I'm working on the franchise agreement. I'll get to that in a moment, but universal collection, it's a necessary step to comply with the regulations that I just reviewed. And I I do believe the city will be able to demonstrate if substantial efforts are being made. Universal collection will also generate additional revenue in franchise fees. So one of the things that is happening is we're working with the solid waste task force to engage a consultant to assist all the all the many of the local jurisdictions to develop the programs necessary to comply with SB 1383. And I will say with franchise fees, there will be additional revenue to the city, which will be able to be used to pay for solid waste related tasks such as street sweeping, trash cleanup. And then the biggest one is probably going to be the compliance with these regulations. So why now? Why are we looking at this now? It takes a long time. Once we settle on a franchise agreement for the for Recology to source the equipment that they're going to need, it takes between 12 and 18 months and the city's not alone. There's a lot of municipalities that are in the same boat and are going to be looking to provide these services in the same time period. So there's going to be a pretty high demand for trucks and bins and the equipment that we would need. Both SB 1383 and CARB requirements may limit the availability also of the equipment in the future. So shortage of garbage trucks because they're being timed out due to air quality regulations. A franchise agreement will also allow an updated rate methodology. One of the things that's been in our current, in our current solid waste franchise agreement is really the 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 solid waste fees are are projected and those projections may or may not be entirely accurate. So having rate reviews could help save the rate payers money if if costs aren't as high. And in fact, that happened, if you recall, when we adjusted the solid waste fees recently to change recycling fees, the recycling fees have been overestimated. But we, the city actually received a credit because we did do a rate review and negotiated that with Recology. They voluntarily offered that, but they really didn't have to. So having periodic rate reviews and a mechanism to look at the actual costs and negotiate a pro a fair profit amount or would be something that we would look at to include in the franchise agreement. We also would have the ability to identify programs and services that may or may be different than what we have now. Regional efficiencies, I mentioned that we'll have the opportunity to save if if we implement universal collection at the same time as Riedel and Ferndale, there will be some savings on equipment costs and economy scale for Recology, providing all those services at the same period of time. And then it allow, it'll provide revenue for the city to participate in their regional effort. It'll also allow the city to obviate nuisances, believe it or not. There's a lot of people who do self haul and many of the people in the city are not many, but a lot of those people in the city do store their trash for a long period of time. I'm sure if you've looked around, you've seen people who have trucks or trailers and they're loaded with garbage bags. We do receive a lot of nuisance complaints. That's one of the reasons why the council wanted to have a code compliance officer with excessive storage of trash in people's yards. So that's one of the things that universal collection may all also help. And again, the regulatory drivers I've gone through already. You know, if we don't, we Cal Recycle will likely take enforcement action if they don't see that effort by the city. So a little more on the regional effort. It the solid waste task force, which is is a committee made up of the cities of Humboldt County, the County of Humboldt and the Humboldt Waste Management Authority. The purpose of that committee is to act as an advisory body for the implementation of integrated management and solid waste. So they have agreed that a regional effort would be the most efficient way to to go forward. One of the, you know, Humboldt Waste Management Authority has agreed to take the lead and do some of the contracting work to bring a consultant on board to do a number of the tasks that would be required and and benefit all the cities by providing the deliverables for compliance with SB 1383. There's a recent example. If you recall, the low impact development standards came in for the treatment of stormwater. We worked with the other jurisdictions within the county. So there was one set of rules by which stormwater can be treated. And we issued the stormwater treatment manual or the low impact development manual that dealt with stormwater. So that's that's another recent example of where all the local agencies trying to comply with the same regulations came up with a good document and a good approach that that worked. So the alternative is each one of the cities kind of going on their own and doing something different. So we think there will definitely be significant cost savings if if we work on this together. Some of the consultant led tasks will be, you know, initially a roadmap for compliance and developing what anticipated work products might be not have been included in the request for proposals, a model ordinance for the the reduction of organic waste, the identification of that and evaluation of organics recycling facilities. Right now, there isn't a facility to take food waste and other organic waste, others than green waste. So a a big part of that, even if we wanted to comply, there's nowhere for those organic ways to go. So a big part of the work for the consultant is what type of organic recycling facility should we have? Where should it go? What makes the most sense? How much would it cost? And collecting that information and and looking around the county where that could go. The development of materials for education outreach, development of an edible food recovery program, the development of tech, a template for procurement policies for the use of organic and recycled products. And then the evaluation of waste management structure and potential rate change impacts from all of the things that have to be done for compliance with SB 1383. So again, back to these tiles, you know, these are the discrete parts of the regulation that the city will have to implement. Here you can see the blue squares I I've put over the top of those. Those are items that are going to be addressed by the consultant led tasks and that will be working with the region here. So they're really going to be applied to all of those. And then if you see the red circles, those are items that are going to be involved with the franchise agreement. And Recology or solid waste provider would be included in. And so obviously, in the first tile that, you know, the pickup, that's going to be Recology. They're the ones who who do the solid waste pickup and would do the organic pickup. They could help identify generators and and as a part of the food recovery program, they could also assist if we would like them to with education and outreach. And then also provide data and assist the city with monitoring and compliance. They see a lot of the volumes, the tonnage of all the different types of waste. They and they could, you know, they do and under the current franchise agreement and continue to be a key team member and helping the city to do that monitoring and compliance and reporting back to the state. So there's a lot of opportunities for them to be of assistance through the franchise agreement. So with that, my recommendation is that the council provide direction to me to move and staff to initiate work on updating the city's solid waste franchise agreement with Recology. Just a little bit on timeline, again, we have about four, four and a half years left in the current franchise agreement. And I would expect that the minimum length of time would be 10 years. So we're we're probably looking at extending till about 2030. At least it takes 10 years to, again, to depreciate a lot of the improvements they'd have to make or the equipment they'd have to purchase and other things. So it doesn't make sense. or the equipment they'd have to purchase and other things. So it doesn't make sense to, to do one for less. But this will likely take, um, at least a few months and maybe more. So if we get started now, if we come to an agreement around the end of the year, then recology would have a year to purchase the equipment they need to allow us to, to be in compliance. And then it's likely the services wouldn't be provided to public until twenty twenty-three. So even if we get an agreement together, it's gonna take a long time till we actually get to the point of implementation. So that's why we're starting early and really that's the impetus for bringing it as a discussion item. I know there's been some back and forth on universal collection and I didn't wanna start this effort without the concurrence of the council. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'll just point out that the scope of work in the request for proposal that was issued by HWMA for the consultant was attached to the staff report and includes a lot of detailed information that, uh, may be useful.
Thank you, Merritt. Does anyone from the council have questions, comments?
Just a comment that this has been hanging out and was another unfunded mandate for quite some time now. And there is no, there's been attempts, but there has been no successful way to deal with organics outside of green waste and wood waste. And this is something we're gonna have to build from the ground up. And it's working as a regional, uh, body to do this. As Merritt said, it was successful when we had the MS four permits, cause I was on that. And this is another time where we can work collaboratively to conquer this. And that's about what it's gonna be. And universal pickup is not, I don't think we have a choice in the matter. I think it's gonna be required to make this work. So there's no other way to do it. And hopefully it does see a lot of reduction in dumping as they have in other agencies. And I mean, I've helped do some cleanups and stuff. And it's crazy, the amount of things you find in the weeds, fuel filters, oil filters, batteries and all manner of stuff. So as, and then going back in what Merritt was talking about, it looks like universal pickup probably wouldn't even take effect until the end of twenty-three or first part. I mean, the end of twenty-two, first part of twenty-three, is that right, Merritt?
Yeah, that's correct. So they think it would take at least, you know, it, it's gonna, it would take us at least until the end of the year to hammer out the franchise agreement. And then it would take them a minimum of twelve months to source the equipment. So right now, if we started tomorrow, we're really looking at January twenty twenty-three.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have to say in question.
Anyone else? How many comments?
I do. Merritt, just for clarification, when you're talking about universal collection, you're talking about, um, garbage service that will be required for all residential and businesses within the city of Fortuna. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
So there will be no choice on the part of businesses or residences. So my, my question is this, can there be exemptions for, say, homeowners based on low or fixed income, um, for instance, to include seniors?
Yeah, you know, I've already received a few questions from council members about this. Currently in our current, in our current rate structure, we do have a lower cost service for seniors. And I think there's a lot of documentation to, um, or, or evidence that seniors produce less garbage and that there can be justification for a reduced, um, solid waste fee. And I think there's other exemptions too. So what the city's gonna have to do is the city's gonna have to develop an ordinance. This is one of the tasks that the consultant may help with, but the city's gonna have to develop an ordinance. And so in that ordinance, we could actually think of what those exceptions are. And this will be one of the things that the consultant would help with is, is, is providing a model ordinance. And just like our other ordinance, whether it's, um, you know, take a look at any of the rest of them. What, what, what the council would be charged with doing is making that specific for, for tuna. And, you know, we just couldn't take it so far where you exempt everybody because really Cal Recycle, who, which is a regulating agency is gonna look at the city's effort. And really, if we show it, you know, it, if, if we show an effort to comply, I think we're gonna be low on the priority list for enforcement action. And really, that's what we're looking for. And, and representatives of Cal Recycle have told us as much. He said, look, if you're updating your franchise agreement, if you're, you're putting an ordinance in place, even though we don't have anywhere to take those food waste right now, we're, we're not gonna come after you. So back to your question, you know, there will be exceptions. There's always gonna be exceptions to the rule and we have to think about what those are for the citizens of Fortuna and which one should apply. And the time for that will come when we do the ordinance. And then when we develop the franchise agreement, those exceptions would be incorporated into the franchise agreements to, to, to document which, which folks might not have to have service.
Thank you. And I, and I know the details, uh, uh, like this are going to be worked out in the future. But probably all of the council members, if we've had questions, it's gonna be, they've been those kinds of questions. What if I can't afford to have universal collection? What if I can't afford to pay for it? So those kinds of things, I think if we get out in front of it, that, um, you know, in explanation, it might, um, solve some of those issues right up front. To, um, go on what Mike was talking about, um, I, I don't know that we're going to have a choice. I think the state, um, is going to force us and they have forced our hand. So we are going to have to put this into play and we're not going to have a choice. So I think for that reason, um, I think we need to up, uh, give you the go ahead to update the current solid waste franchise agreement and, and move forward with this. That's my feeling.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else have questions or comments?
So I have to say something about, and I know I'm gonna talk about apples and oranges here, but it has to be said. Our citizens and rate payers are gonna have a fit when they get an increased cost for mandatory pickup and they still can't collect on their, um, reimbursable recycling. And it needs to be said because that's one way that those people could pay for that service. And it's frustrating that I get more phone calls about when are we gonna get a recycling, um, center back in Fortuna? And now we're talking about another mandate by Cal Recycle. When Cal Recycle has am strong us from enforcement of reimbursable recycling. So I'm just speaking on behalf of the citizens of Fortuna. It's a frustration. I know that there's a lot of people that have their hands tied right now, but we're gonna get a lot of pushback from citizens regardless of a state mandate. If we don't do something about that as well.
You know, long if I could just respond to council member Stanfield's comments. I just say that, uh, council member Stanfield, we've made a number of outreach attempts to our legislators at the state level. And I, I couldn't agree more. And it's our hope that they solve this. And, you know, I know there's some new legislation and there's new funding sources that are working their way through. If, you know, as staff, we agree wholeheartedly. And, you know, my hope is that they'll solve the redemption value, the lack of redemption site before we get to the point where we're implementing this franchise agreement. But, um, as staff, we're equally frustrated and as citizens as well.
Well, and not just the citizens, but our own businesses are being fined to make up for their lack of taking care of what they should be taking care of. Very frustrating. I see Michelle Bush now has her hand up. Michelle?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to say that starting October first, there is gonna be recycling in the Arcata area. And that will alleviate some of the businesses, um, because there'll be recycling in Humboldt County again. So the fee that the, um, the stores are having to pay, um, they can apply to have that reduced.
Because it's in the count, even though.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and please don't take this as an, as an attack on the, on the vendors. I know they're equally frustrated with this, um, process. But I just think if Cal Recycle really feels like that they have any teeth to mandate something new, they should really stick to what they've already agreed to.
Anyone else have comments or questions?
Uh, I was just gonna say, I did read in the news lately that, uh, Senator McGuire has introduced legislation to uh, allow the CRV buyback centers to operate on an appointment basis. But seeing how our legislative year just ended, I think it's gonna be a while before we see that actually come up. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else?
I just wanted to share, you know, just, just to put the size in perspective, right now about sixty percent of the city's residents get garbage service or slightly more. And so we're expecting that there'd be about a thirty percent increase with universal collection. And one of the things that Linda Wise, um, with recology has told me that, you know, people did haul once a week and did self hauling, that they wouldn't see a significant cost savings. You know, I think what, you know, where people recognize cost savings is that if they haul after a long period of time and they store waste, which is not encouraged, really that we have a lot of vector control issues and it creates rats. And so, you know, there isn't a big cost savings for people who haul on a regular basis and self haul because the tipping fees have been adjusted. So they wouldn't really see a significant cost increase to have that collection service over self hauling if they hauled on a weekly basis. So, um, so, you know, we, we did think about that and, and, and I, again, I hope that we could solve part of the nuisance, um, issue with this too. So I think I've heard from council unless there's any other feedback.
Linda, did you wanna say anything?
Um, no, I, I just wanna tell you that I, I hear you about the redemption sites. And I'm keeping a close eye on it too. And I'm hoping that that bill can be approved and there can be some appointments. I mean, the last thing I, I'm worried about is that if everybody in Humboldt County comes to Fortuna and you'll, so that's what I'm worried about. And I understand that.
We will help with traffic control if you make it happen, Linda.
All right. Well, thank you, Merritt. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, council. And we'll move on to our first item of actual city business tonight. Uh, award professional services contract to Pace Engineering for Water System Emergency Generators Project, CIP nine one zero two. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Long. Kevin Carter, our deputy director of public works, has been working on this project and he's gonna provide the staff report.
Eric, good evening, honorable mayor and council. Um, I got a short PowerPoint presentation. I'll try to share it. Eric should be up and running. Um, the item before us here tonight is a staff recommendation to award professional services contract to Pace Engineering for engineering design, environmental documentation, grant administrative assistance and construction management assistance for the city's water system emergency generators project, CIP ninety-one oh two. The city successfully received a grant funding from Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purchase of two emergency generators for two locations, one being the Drake Hill Water Pump Station and the other being the Kenmore Water Pump Station. These generators will be stationary and always available in the event of a power outage. The generators will automatically turn on, which will alleviate the need for staff to respond with portable generators and allowing for attention to be focused elsewhere. So of the two sites, this is the location for the Kimar Water Booster Pump Station. It's at the intersection of Russell Road, Kim Boulevard in Kenmore. This next slide shows the approximate generator location behind the, uh, the facility. The next location is the Drake Hill Water Booster Station up on Drake Hill Road, kind of across from Airport Road. And this is the approximate generator location as well. So staff, um, put out a request for proposals, they issued it June tenth of twenty twenty-one. Those were due in July. And we publicly advertised, uh, the, the RFP along this, posted to our website and we directly sent it out to some local firms. We received only one proposal from Pace Engineering. And, um, that, that proposal is a not to exceed amount of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. With the overall project budget of being four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, we will see three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars for construction of the project. We're wanting to get moving on this relatively quickly. We have a timeframe that we have to have the project done in, um, RPIMA. And, um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, but that, that, uh, includes my presentation otherwise.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anyone from the council have questions?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Hold on one minute, Mike. Please, um, let's open public comments while the council is asking their questions. If anyone would like to comment on this item, you can call the number on your screen. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
I was wondering if the optional construction, uh, management included the permitting process because that seems to be one of the places historically we've had difficulties and some of our institutional knowledge isn't here now. And I was wondering if this would be one of the optional things that they could do is help with the permitting for CARB, which actually the North Coast Unified Air Quality District is the local permitting authority. And if that was part of it.
Um, yes, permitting is, uh, one of the scoped items. It's not part of the optional. It's actually part of the, the, the original scope. The optional is just some, uh, construction, uh, management assistance. Basically, um, reviewing any, any specifications or anything that is technical to the engineering aspect of the project. But yes, absolutely. The permitting will be, is, is definitely scoped within the, um, the tasks for Pace Engineering.
Awesome. Thank you. That's another one of those unfunded mandate things. Yeah, stack up. Thanks.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
I do. Kevin, in, in looking at their proposal, um, it's a twenty-two page proposal. And, um, all I can say is wow, it is just an amazing layout. It looked like they've touched on, on just about every aspect of both of these projects. Um, it's laid out just very, very professionally. And the people that they've got assigned to the project, um, look like they, they've got all the re, required background and education. Um, so I've, I've really have to compliment Pace for the professional form that they've used here for their, um, proposal. My question is that at least one of these, um, areas, the, the one in particular on Kenmore will have, and, and will have the Tesla power pack. But there's no mention of their background as far as in the proposal, having worked with any interface with Tesla power packs or with any of the Tesla, um, you know, um, projects in the past. Are you familiar? Are they, are they, do they have that kind of experience?
Um, the request for proposals didn't address the, the Tesla portion of, that'll be the detail that we get into once we get Pace out to do an initial site visit and to discuss, um, the switchgear and the, uh, the automatic transfer switch and how that will interface with the battery, the batteries from the Tesla. One or the other will be working. Um, the Tesla batteries will primarily be just for peak shaving. So it'll be, um, operating the pumps during, uh, high energy costs where this emergency generators, um, will be thrown on when the power goes out in an emergency situation. And they, there will be a transfer switch generator on, but won't allow for the batteries to be working at the same time. So there'll, there'll be some definite coordination between Tesla, this engineering firm and, and ourselves and our, our crews and how that all works together. and how that all works together. But I have full confidence in that this, this will be done. We have a similar situation down at the wastewater treatment plant with an emergency generator that had to, we had to work that out with as well with the Tesla batteries down here. So.
Right. And I, I realized that and knew that there is an interface with the power pack there along with our emergency generator there. And I'm sure that with all of the experience that Pace has listed, that they've, they've had to have run across this and have some experience with, with the Tesla Power Packs. But I just thought if you had touched base with them on that.
Not yet. It's an excellent point. That'll be one of the first things that, that we discuss on their, their initial site visit.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
I have a quick question about the long W's and is it gonna include annual maintenance that our staff can take care of? Or is it something that's gonna have to be inspected by an agency of some sort? Number one. Number two, is there gonna be some sort of a remote switch where they're tested on a regular basis so they work when we need them?
We, we test our generators on a monthly basis. We, we run them for, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, something like that every month to make sure that they're in good operating order. We do that while we're on site. We don't do it remotely. We do it, you know, so we can be there, watch it, make sure that everything's working properly. The regular maintenance that we do on that, our, our crews can handle most of that. The, the only thing, you know, with the newer generator is really not a whole lot that, you know, they're called the, like in Councilmember Johnson's point with CARB, it's a tier four final engine, so it's, it's going to last for the foreseeable future anyway, as far as their quality's concerned. And it'll actually remove a couple of our older portables or the needs to keep those going. They can be used other places, so we won't be taking a portable from one location to another location during an outage and, and, and. Anyway, I hope that answered your question, but yeah, we will be doing regular maintenance on it and our crews are pretty well versed in that.
Example that popped into my head was like when somebody had to put in like an elevator for a building, like we used to have one at the Monday Club. And it wasn't so much the cost of the installation. It was the eight thousand dollar annual review or, or a renewal of the certification that nobody was anticipating when we installed it. So it popped into my head and I just want to make sure that wasn't gonna be something that came up and bit us.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that elevator situation now that we're relaunching. Yeah, this is not the same.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see any hands raised from anyone on Zoom. Siana, did anyone call in?
No, I don't see any additional attendees.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and entertain a motion.
At a mayor, I'll authorize and move to authorize the city manager to award the professional services contract of Pace Engineering for engineering design, environmental documentation, grant administrative assistance, and optional construction management for the water system emergency generators project, CIP number nine one zero two, in an amount not to exceed seventy four thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars.
A second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Our next item is the public hearing to consider general plan map amendments and zoning map amendment for assessed parcel numbers two zero two, two eight one, zero three six through zero four three, zero four four, zero four nine, zero five two, zero five three on Hilltop and APN two hundred four five four, zero zero two on Newburgh Road, ordinance twenty twenty one dash seven forty eight.
Ms. Yori, our Deputy Director of Community Development, has this staff report for the council.
Evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to present this with the PowerPoint. So Siana, if you want to go ahead and let it share.
You should be able to share.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, so in this staff report, there are two actions. One is a general plan amendment and one is a rezone. And there are two areas combined into each of those actions. So there's a residential area that has a general plan amendment and a rezone, and then there's a commercial area. So we're combining them in order to just be able to adopt one of each of those, you know, an ordinance in the case of the rezone and a general plan amendment for the other. So, um, go ahead and go to the. So for the residential area, that's located on Hilltop Avenue and the aerial shows the six parcels that are involved. And so these are, the property lines are shown in blue. So these are each, these, you know, narrow deep lots and the zone boundary is shown in yellow. So on the front is the R one six zoning and in the rear is the RE twenty. You can see just for context, Strawberry Lane is to the east, Hilltop Drive. This is the older existing, or since I think the fifties when it was in the county. And all of these parcels have the R one six zoning. And the front of these parcels also has R one six zoning, so it's just the rear yard where a request was made to rezone that to R one six. And you can see, you know, it literally bisects these, some of these parcels and creates a difficulty when, in this case, they want to construct a detached structure in the, in the rear of the parcel. And the RE twenty has much larger setbacks. So they wanted the setbacks, you know, that's consistent with the front of the parcels and also consistent with the neighborhood. And to the west over here is Hilltop Drive and the River View Terrace subdivision that's under construction. And that zoning is also R one six. And this is the, basically what triggered the rezone. This is, we received an application for a building permit and for a single family residence and a garage or a carport is required with that. And they wanted to leave the front of their parcel open, you know, for more area and also for a future garage. But for now, they want to construct a carport in the rear. The carport really is to, you know, give them an area that's covered from the rain for storage, but also it's covered parking is required by the zoning code. So they do have to construct a carport and instead of up front, they do want to place it in the back so that they have more options up front in the future after they build the, the house. So they submitted a request for a rezone, an application, and then city staff reviewed the map and the zoning map and saw that it made sense to clean up the map and add in the neighboring parcels along that little stretch that also have the split zoning. So, you know, it just made sense to extend the R one six zoning boundary to the rear to follow the property lines and not have to put, you know, put up with the inconsistencies of that RE twenty zoning. So this is just a, the comparison of the zoning standards of the two districts and the R one six setback standards are appropriate for the smaller parcels. In this R one six zoning, the side setback is five feet. And then the RE twenty zoning, it's fifteen feet on the side and the rear is fifteen feet and then thirty feet. So, you know, there's a, there's a significant difference. The parcels aren't really that large and, you know, having a larger setbacks just takes up usable space. And, you know, it's just gonna create uniformity and bring them into like a equal level with other residences on Hilltop. And this is just some photographs of their, of the parcel that made the request and that, you know, for two different views and you can see, you know, it's fairly level. It does drop off in the rear, but the buildable area is, you know, really not much more of a slope as the front of the parcel. So, and you can see like the neighboring parcel, they have a detached structure as well and then just a gentle slope. So there's really no topographical need for the RE twenty setback. And so the zoning map just shows the same, you know, configuration. This is the area that would be rezone from RE twenty to R one six and you can see the surrounding zoning. You know, they're really, they're, these parcels are really part of this R one six neighborhood rather than the RE twenty to the north, which is a large lot. And they do have some slope on parts of their lot and there's, you know, water, water features, you know, to be preserved and things like that. So, um, you know, again, it just brings them into conformance with the rest of the neighborhood. And the general plan map is going to look similar because, you know, it covers the same parcels. It's the zoning change is really what, you know, is driving this. And the general plan map needs to be amended because it needs to be consistent with the, with the zoning. So, um, the general plan map would be amended from the RBL residential very low to the general plan designation of residential low. So that's really just a, you know, for consistency there. And with the general plan, we, we look at the density. And in this case, there won't be any increase in the number of parcels, so the density won't be increased. There, there won't be any developable parcels as a result of the amendments because these parcels really can't be further developed based on their parcel size. So there won't be any future subdivisions. There won't be any, you know, really, the most that can be constructed back there would be accessory structures. So it makes sense and there's no, you know, there isn't any kind of an impact or anything like that. So moving on to the next rezone and general plan amendment, this is the Newburgh Road, Runaville Road. It was formerly the Eureka Physical Therapy and now it's being used as a new police station. And the zoning would just make the police station conform to the zoning. You can see and, you know, there's Newburgh Road to the east and then the surrounding area is developed with, for the most part, with single family homes and then some pockets of, well, actually, a Newburgh Road on the other side is multifamily. And you can also see in this view how changing the zoning, so Newburgh Park is owned public facility and this will just be an extension of that public facility zoning and kind of create a larger sort of public, you know, governmental sort of complex, I guess. But it does, you know, it's really just extending that boundary. And then the closer view, you can see the development on the site, Eureka Physical Therapy, and which is now, you know, being occupied by the police department. And there'll be, you know, minimal change. There's significant interior remodeling going on and then a small expansion on the southeast side. But for the most part, you know, the, I would consider this existing development. And the zoning map shows the existing neighborhood commercial, it's just a small pocket and then the public facility to the east and then the rest of the surrounding zoning is residential variety of types. And, you know, again, the, so the rezoning will support the city's intent to use the site for public services and will bring the facility into conformance with the zoning. We could retain the neighborhood commercial and have a conditional use permit issued for the police department, but it's really cleaner to have it, have the police station, you know, have the public facility zoning, which allows the police station to be a principally permitted use. You know, it's an essential service and we really want it to have a secure zone status in the zoning standards. And for zoning comparison, so on the left is the existing neighborhood commercial zoning. And, you know, the most, for the most part is to provide offices, retails and services that serve the neighborhood. And on the right, the public facility zoning, it's really for, typically for governmental use. And the principally permitted use does include police stations. And the conditional uses would be other essential services, but certainly the police station is an essential service. And then the general plan map, again, that's gonna look similar to the zoning. The general plan designation would change from commercial to public. And, you know, there are certainly numerous general plan policies that support a police facility, including policies for essential emergency services, critical response times, providing adequate facilities and personnel, maintaining service standards and others, you know, related infill development. So we're, you know, we're, we're in an existing neighborhood and we're using blighted or underutilized structures. In this case, you know, it's not really blighted, but it's still reusing instead of, you know, constructing from the ground, but definitely, you know, it's an infill that, that utilizes and, and upgrade. So, you know, with remodeling that's going on, it will be an upgrade and, you know, there, there will be remodeling on the exterior just to upgrade the building's appearance, installing, upgrading the parking lot and installing landscaping. And this is the site plan. It shows the new facility, occupying the existing building space with a small addition on the southeast side. And, you know, this is gonna allow installation of the much needed services and equipment upgrades and space expansion from the existing city hall. And their operation, you know, that shows the facility fits the corner. They're operating there now and it serves the public, it serves that neighborhood. So I think in that regard, it still fulfills the neighborhood commercial use of serving the neighborhood. It also serves the larger city by, you know, improving access throughout the city and, you know, just being able to respond easier rather than going through the narrow streets and the streetlight, traffic lights in the downtown area. So, and then also note that there's not an increase in traffic or noise over the existing facility as they, you know, they haven't increased staffing or sirens typically go on when the officers are already driving their routes. So, you know, that's something that will have an impact on the SEQA, which is actually the next slide. So SEQA requires review of potential impacts when a public agency makes a land use decision. The factors influencing the staff findings, so these blended items are basically the findings to, the findings have no impact and that no additional SEQA analysis is needed or no SEQA document needs to be adopted. So the, both of the sites, the Hilltop and the Newburgh Road sites are developed with existing development, residential in the one case and previously commercial and now a similar type of, of public use. There's minimal expansion. Amendments won't increase the number of residents or employees or level of service because they're already developed and police station won't result in an increase in traffic or vehicle trips and it's already functioning throughout the city. And there won't be any significant effects related to traffic, noise or quality, water quality, since essentially there aren't any new residents or new staffing as a result of the change. And there's no effect on habitat for endangered rare threatened species since the parcels are already developed and utilities and public surfaces already exist to serve the parcels. So because of this, there are no potential, potentially significant physical environmental effects. And then the general plan program EIR that was prepared and adopted for the general plan in twenty ten, analyzed for these sites, a comparable level of, of development. So on the Hilltop parcels, you know, it was already analyzed for R one six. And for the Newburgh Road parcel, the increase in intensity of use isn't increasing in terms of traffic and things of that nature. So it's comparable in that regard and already analyzed in the program EIR. So under SEQA, no additional analysis. So under SEQA, no additional analysis required when an adequate review process has already been adopted. So. The, the general plan program EIR already made, already has been adopted and we don't need to revisit any SEQA action. So the recommended council action, there's two motions. One is to adopt the resolution for the general plan amendment from residential very low to residential low. That's for the Hilltop parcels. And then from commercial to public, that's for the Newburgh Road parcel. And then following that, an ordinance to amend the zoning map from residential estates RE twenty to R one six for the Hilltop parcels and then from neighborhood commercial to public facility for the Newburgh Road parcels. And then this also needs to be continued. The ordinance needs to be continued to Monday, September twentieth, the second reading. And I just wanted to note that on page five of the staff report, the attachment description at the end, and there was a little glitch there. And so those aren't written correctly. So they need to be read off of the PowerPoint or they can be read the resolution and the ordinance titles in the staff report are correct as well. Pass it back to the mayor.
So do you have copies of the ordinances included in here? Or we just?
Yes, they're in your staff report. Actual resolution.
In our staff report from where?
What's that? Page six of the business item is the resolution and that title can be read and then the ordinance is on page nine of the business agenda item.
We didn't get that.
What's that?
My page just says business agenda item sixty will be attached on nine three. So did we get that on another day? And I'm in the wrong agenda?
Oh, so you're leaving the agenda. Oh, no, those, those should be fine. Agenda itself.
Mayor Long, it's all in one big file in there. So they're not included as separate attachments. So if you go to the attachment, the resolution is on page twenty one. And the ordinance. Excuse me, the ordinance on page twenty one, the resolution on page sixteen of the attachment, if you're looking at the online agenda.
So I went on the one that Buffy sent us and that is not in there.
So just for clarification, Buffy published an initial packet on Thursday last week and you probably downloaded that version on Friday. The new attachment was added with all of the additional pieces of the staff report.
Well, I didn't get any new emails. My last emails from Buffy are on line two. So if I go to the city website, is this going to get me what I want?
Yes.
Because I didn't get any of this. Did anybody else?
I didn't.
I did.
Yeah, I got it.
How did you manage that? Was it an actual email that came?
On nine, three.
Wonder if I deleted it somehow without paying attention. You know, I could do that.
I didn't get it either. And I don't think I deleted it.
So when she makes a change to, when she uploads a different agenda link to the page on the city's website, it will automatically send you all a notification saying, view this update to the webpage. And that's where the new link should be embedded. So they weren't sent out individually. It happens automatically when she makes the change.
Well, did it happen automatically on my end? I'm still trying to get it to load up.
And just for clear, we don't typically publish a, a separate portion of the packet on another day. This was an exception. So I apologize for the confusion.
So I'm on the city website, getting my pages down to whatever page I need to find. But yeah. Question why you're doing. Yes.
Um, Liz, on the lots on Hilltop, are those one lot that's half R one six and half are, or half twenty or they one, are they separate lots?
No, they are all, they're all single lots. So they have a split zoning in the middle. So the front is R one six and the rear of the parcel is RE twenty.
So that'll just make the full lot R one six.
Yes, that was the blue line on the the aerial.
Thank you.
And can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
While you're still looking.
I've got it now. I'm just reading the ordinance.
Well, with regard to the police facility, I considered since this is in the neighborhood where I live, if this item would be a conflict for me to take part in the discussion. But I don't believe that the proposed change would impact my property values in any way. It's my actual residence. So I don't believe this would be a conflict for my involvement at all, but I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
I don't see it as a conflict either. Does city staff have any comments?
No, just said it's up to the council member to determine whether or not he has a conflict. And even though he lives somewhat close, Liz may have more on the distance. I think it's a thousand feet, Liz, but really it's already in use as a police facility. And so this is really kind of a housekeeping zoning change and amendment. So it's not going to change the use. It's not going to change use by the city and it it shouldn't affect any, you know, it shouldn't affect private property values because the use that it's intended for is already existing.
Thank you.
Okay, you're good. All right. I kind of went through both of these ordinances. Sorry about that, but I did not get the update to tell me to go look for this. So now I'm finding my motion page. Hold on.
So there might be a slight change and I think, right, Liz, isn't the one that you're showing on the screen slightly different?
Okay, that's what we should use to make our motions and we need.
Yeah. Yeah, the titles in the packet are correct. It's just on the motion page where it got switched. The bottom in italics, the attachment description.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and the screen has the correct motions as well.
Okay. And let's open public comment because we didn't do that. Anyone else from the council have any other questions while we're waiting to see if anyone calls in? No, all right. Sorry, my bad for not having that on my screen, but I didn't know what I was doing apparently. Siana, no calls. I didn't see anyone raising their hand that's on with us.
Nope, I see no additional public comment.
All right, we'll close public comment and entertain a motion. Two motions.
I'll make the first motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty nine. A resolution of the city of Fortuna, of the city council of the city of Fortuna to amend the general plan map from residential very low R V L to residential low RL and commercial C O M to public P U B.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash seven four eight. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna to amend the zoning map for residential estates RE twenty to residential single family R one six and neighborhood commercial N C to public facility PF and continue the public hearing to Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty one for the second reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. All right. Thank you for getting through that craziness.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Liz. All right, our next item is approve a supplemental budget request to develop a project study report for the 12th Street and Highway one oh one interchange improvement project. Staff report.
Yeah, Brendan Burden, city engineer, will be providing, providing this staff report and the staff report for the following item as well.
Thank you, Merritt, and good to see everybody this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Please, everybody, let me know once you can see it.
It's there.
Excellent. Okay. So again, thank you, Merritt and Honorable Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present the item C, which is a supplemental budget request to complete the project study report for the 12th Street Interchange Improvement Project, a photo of which is generally shown here on this cover slide, which also shows the intersection of Newburgh Road and 12th Street, which as many of us know, is another difficult intersection here in the city of Fortuna. So to begin with a little history and establish the project need. Some time ago, of course, the city was effectively split into two different zones through the construction of the current alignment of Highway one oh one. The two resulting districts in Fortuna are the Riverwalk area and the remainder of town, which includes the downtown, the Boulevard area and Strong Street Plaza. So highway construction in and around local roads, as it often does, resulted in some adverse impacts to our local roads and our interchanges with Highway one oh one, which in these cases, in the cases of 12th Street and Kenmore, include non-standard geometries and line of sight at the interchanges and nearby intersections, a lack of non-motorized connectivity across the freeway at these interchanges and traffic congestion at these intersections during peak times as the city has continued to grow beyond the construction date originally of the highway. So with some of that established need, back in 2016, the city completed a planning study using a complete streets grant. This study was aimed to develop design alternatives to improve connectivity across Highway one oh one at the Kenmar and 12th Street interchanges and to identify ways to better connect the Riverwalk area to the city's other planning districts. As a result of this, of the study, both the Kenmar and 12th Street interchanges had preferred design alternatives of dog bone roundabouts, dog bone meaning a single roundabout on each side of Highway one oh one. These improvements would increase the level of service, fix some of the non-standard geometric roadway issues with our local roads, allow for the continued development of key zones within the city, including the Mill District as an example, and also function as gateways to the city as shown in the photo simulation on the lower left here especially. So on the heels of completing the planning study in 2016, the city was able to use the information developed in the study to complete what's called a project study report, which was used to apply for state transportation improvement program or STIP funding for the Kenmar interchange portion of the project. The city was ultimately awarded $550,000 in the 2018 STIP funding cycle to complete PA and ED work for the Kenmar interchange project, P and A, PA and ED, including preliminary engineering design and environmental documentation. The city is currently performing this work right now with our engineering consultant and the effort is anticipated to be completed later in 2022. So moving forward to why we are actually here tonight, it became known to city staff early in the summer of 2021 that additional STIP funding would be available for programming in the 2022 cycle, which is actually the first time this funding has been available since 2018, when the city last received some. Upon hearing of the funding availability, staff began to complain to complete a project study report for the 12th Street portion of the project, which will be used to submit a funding request to HCOG for consideration for the 12th Street Interchange Project. Completing this effort requires a supplemental budget request, which has been included in your staff report packet along with the scope from our on-call engineering consultant to complete the project study report for the funding request. With the funding allocated, staff plan to submit a funding request and the project study report to HCOG later in September. And the HCOG board should be voting on these items later in November. So with that, I'd like to close my staff report with my recommendation, which is that council approve a supplemental budget request the amount of $6,500 for the development of a project study report for the 12th Street Interchange Project. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brendan. We'll open public comment. Does anyone from the council have any questions?
I believe this does affect me both in a couple of different ways, within a couple hundred feet of my house for one thing. And looks like the access to 12th Street is changing potentially. And so I think I'm going to have to recuse myself from this.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a quick question about the overpass. Is the current study using the existing overpass or is this actually a new overpass being straightened out from 12th Street straight over to Riverwalk?
The, the study was based on upgrading the interchanges on both sides and to keep the existing overpass, but to expand upon it to allow for, you know, a, a traditional sidewalk be put across the edge of the bridge to connect both sides. So it wouldn't involve reconstruction of the overpass. It would involve design and construction modifications to the overpass.
Great, thank you.
Who's the comment, Mayor?
Yes.
You know, so I doubt very much that Caltrans consulted the city of Fortuna when they designed the freeway to split our city in half. I would hope that there would be Caltrans money to assist us with both the Kenmar roundabout and redesign as well as the 12th Street redesign. We can only hope that that would, that that would happen. Although any, anything that we can do on that 12th Street intersection to help. I'm not a fan of roundabouts, but it's better than what we've got right now. And I, I just, I think it's a move in the right direction.
Very good. And I, I would like to note in that, that, you know, we have been working collaboratively with Caltrans and completing the Kenmar portion of the project and they did really step up, really to help us kind of deliver the days of work we're in now and, and both the city manager and myself are trying to have as, as many conversations and discussions with Caltrans to, you know, hopefully highlight the, the importance of these projects and get them going, not just with inside of the city of Fortuna staff level, you know, efforts, but also in, in the Caltrans world as well. So. Here's hoping.
Let, yeah, let's hope that funding along with the discussion will be happening.
Anyone else?
Oh, in both scenarios, do the train gates go away?
You know, that's, that's a hot topic right now and we're kind of waiting patiently, but my understanding is that with the great redwood trail that pretty soon, a lot of the alignment is going to be rail banked for that improvement. And if that happens, my preliminary understanding, and I would say, don't quote me on this, but this is what I've been hearing, is that if that's the case, then the need for a trail right of way or a trail for a rail right of way through and any of those appurtenances would go away in favor of having the great redwood trail that is currently planned for. So, which would be wonderful.
That, that would be excellent. I've had a conversation recently with Merritt regarding a citizen who has requested that those things be taken down. And I'm sure he's not the only one who just sees those as a real eyesore.
Absolutely.
Anyone else from council? I see no raised hands from any of our participants. Siana, anyone?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of 6,500 to develop a project study report for 12th Street and Highway one oh one interchange improvement project.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. All right, our next item of business is to approve a contract amendment with Tesla for the Tesla battery project at the Corrosion Control Facility, CIP number nine one zero seven. Staff report, please.
Yes, so that's me again, and I'll be sharing my screen once more. So again, please let me know when that's up and running.
It is up. It is up.
Excellent, okay. So, thank you again. I'm back. I know it's been a while, but I knew you missed me, so here I am. I'm here to present the next business item, which is business item D, a Tesla contract amendment for a battery system at the city's water supply, which is also referred to as the Corrosion Control Facility or CCF. So to kind of begin this project at its origin, I'd like to start a few years back. In 2019 and 2020, California experienced a pretty devastating pair of wildfire seasons, which in 2020 resulted in mass public safety power shut-off events, or PSPS events, of which I'm sure we can all remember quite fondly. So as a response to the PSPS events after they went in, and the issues that were created as a result of of them, in 2020, the California Public Utilities Commission allocated additional budget for one of their programs, which is called the Self-Generation Incentive Program, or S-GIP. This program focuses on funding energy storage projects serving customers with medical needs, refrigeration needs, and critical municipal infrastructure that were affected by at least two PSPS events in 2020. With the funding made available, companies such as Tesla began approaching potentially eligible program applicants such as the city of Fortuna, offering assistance with developing applications for the S-GIP program. So in 2020, Tesla performed a review of city infrastructure systems' power consumption data and determined that three of the city's sites would be eligible for S-GIP applications. Those included the city's wastewater treatment plant on Dinsmore Drive, the city's Kenmar Road Water Booster Station, and the Water Corrosion Control Facility, or CCF, which is the city's water supply. After determining program eligibility, the city elected to move forward with Tesla with agreements to design and furnish turnkey battery systems at all of these locations at no cost to the city. So with how I ended the last slide with no cost to the city, I guess it begs the question, why is a contract amendment with Tesla needed in the first place? So I guess in a nutshell, the Tesla agreements through the S-GIP program included designing and installing battery and inverter systems at these facilities with simple slab-on-grade construction. An example of this photo is shown generally in the bottom left on the slide here, which is actually the Tesla battery system that was recently installed at the city's wastewater treatment plant. As the design effort began to progress at the city's water well site, it became evident that the Tesla battery system at this location would need to be elevated above the 100-year floodplain, similar to other critical infrastructure at the water supply site. An example of the elevated pad and associated appurtenances such as railing and stairs is shown in the photo in the bottom right, which is actually the city's backup power generator at the CCF facility. So once we determine this, Tesla informed the city that under the S-GIP agreement as currently written, they would not fund the additional work for the elevated pad as part of their project, and if the city wanted to move forward with the project, that we would need to fund that discrete portion of the improvement ourselves. So the decision was put on staff if we wanted to move forward with the project, which brought forward the question, is it worth it financially for us over the lifetime of the project to pay for these improvements? So to quantify this, staff and Tesla completed engineers' estimates and solicited quotes from local contractors and determined that the anticipated capital costs to the city to construct the elevated pad would be somewhere on the range of $65,000 to $85,000. Concurrently, Tesla staff performed some financial and power consumption analysis that estimated that annually the battery system is projected to save the city approximately $46,000 per year through peak shaving, which is where the site will actually run off the battery power during peak power rate times, which is during the day, and charge the batteries again at night when power rates were lower. So using these numbers, staff determined that the investment would have a relatively fast payback period of one and a half to two years, and a total net financial benefit to the city of up to $400,000 over a 10-year period. So to answer the previous question I posed, yes, the project was deemed worth it, and staff elected to move forward and budgeted funds in the fiscal year 2122 budget to complete the project. So this leads up to tonight. After determining that the city would like to move forward with the project, staff gave Tesla authorization to continue project design at the CCF site, which was recently completed in August of this year. Upon completion, Tesla has been bidding the project with their local contractors and will furnish bids and costs to the city prior to authorizing construction. With final bids and an approved amendment with Tesla, they can begin construction in September, and staff anticipate construction completion, battery interconnection, and testing to completed to be completed by year's end. So with that, I'd like to end with my staff recommendation, which is that council authorize or to approve an amendment to the city's existing contract with Tesla for the battery project at the Corrosion Control Facility with a not-to-exceed value of $100,000. And with that, again, more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brendan. We'll open public comment and go to the council for any questions or comments. Anyone? So I have a question. If we have the raised pedestals already down at the plant, how did we miss that this was also gonna need to be on raised pedestal?
We did not necessarily, we didn't really miss it. What it was is we moved forward with preliminary design, and that's when you start to work with Tesla about site-specific items. And so when we started to talk about things that would need to be completed as part of that project, that's where Tesla kind of balked at it, and that was outside of their agreement. So it's not anything that was missed. It was just the natural progression of the project that took us there.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. So they're asking for a budgeted amount up to $100,000. Should that be a part of the motion?
Yes, because that would be, you know, that would be the not-to-exceed value that we'd be proposing to amend the contract up to. That's not necessarily the anticipated value of the improvements. I I'm expecting and speaking with Tesla's representatives recently that it should come in a little bit that. But that is the amount that we budgeted for in the CIP, which should help, you know, include for any small construction contingencies that may come up.
Anyone else from council? I don't see any participants with raised hands. Siana, do you have anyone on your end?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Back to the council for a motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to approve an amendment to the city's existing contract with Tesla for the battery project at the Corrosion Control Facility, CCF, under CIP number 9107, and not to exceed $100,000.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, moving on to city manager's report. Merritt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Long. As typical, I'd like to review the upcoming meeting dates. Our next city council meeting will be on Monday, September 20th, at 6 o'clock PM. Our next planning commission will be on Tuesday, September 14th, also at 6 o'clock PM. Our next Measure E meeting will be September 21st. That's coming up. It's been a while since we've had one of those, so that is at 5:30. And Wednesday, October 6th, is our next Runner Community Recreation Park District meeting. So I just have a few items for my verbal report. One of those is that we two of our grant applications that we submitted to the Headwaters Board are moving forward for consideration on September 14th. One of those is a master plan for the Riverfront Park, and another is for additional studies to support the specific plan at the Mill Site. So we're gonna be putting together presentations submitting in those weeks for consideration by the Headwaters Board on the 14th. Staff is also bringing the SB two accessory dwelling unit staff report to the Planning Commission on September 14th. So very soon, that will be coming to the council as an ordinance, and really the intention of that is to make it easier for accessory dwelling units to be built and and to update the city's ordinance on accessory dwelling units to comply with new state laws. Another exciting thing that'll be happening in September is the Bird Scooters launch. You may recall the council approved an MOU with Bird Scooters. They've informed us that they'd like to launch in September with a smaller number at first, but ultimately getting up to 75 scooters, so they are expecting to do that mid-September, and they've updated us and told us that they've hired a local project manager for the implementation. So we expect to see that real soon, and we'll share a press release with the Chamber of Commerce, and and they will be doing an outreach campaign as well. So that will be happening really soon. We also were informed today that we were awarded USDA grant for the purchase of two police vehicles in the amount of $50,000. That will cover a little bit over half of the amount of those vehicles, so expect to see another supplemental budget request in the near future that involves likely asset forfeiture funds for the funding of the other half. I see our chief of police there, so it'll be really nice to retire the last few interceptors of the fleet and and have an updated fleet. I know some of the council members have asked me about that. Amanda, you would sec with Public Works has helped follow it up on that grant as well as Chief Day. I I will also say that the city of Fortune is not immune from the COVID-19 pandemic. We have had some instances in the city, and so we're dealing with that. We're following the public health, county public health recommendations and quarantine. We've also implemented a mandatory testing policy for city employees, so we're taking the steps that we need to, but we, I just wanted to let the council know that we do have some instances of COVID within our workforce, and we're doing our best to keep those to a minimum and do the required monitoring reported in the city. Our city clerk, human resources director, Siana Emmons, has taken on a lot of work. There's a lot that goes into capturing the weekly test data, reporting to the state, and then making recommendations in the in the myriad of different case scenarios that have been happening. So it's it's a lot for her to take on, and it's a lot of work for the city to to be able to track these for all the supervisors and and human resources. So just want to let you know that we are dealing with that. And then one of the things that we're considering, we were talking about at a staff level, is we did have a request from a from a monster truck show to do a show at the rodeo grounds, and they're very loud, and they wanna, and they would expect to have a high attendance of about 3,000 people a night. You know, a little concerned about noise, very concerned about the potential for COVID spread, so it may be not maybe something that we don't consider further, but it's something that we've been talking about at staff level. It's it's hard because we would like to see the public get out and have a little bit of fun, but at the same time, we also want to be responsible. So if any of the council members have input on that, feel free to contact me later and let me know, but we're still discussing that at a staff level and and haven't made a determination on that yet. So that concludes my report. That's all that I have.
All right, thank you, Merritt. Any questions for Merritt? All right, any future agenda items? All right, city council reports. Mike Johnson?
Uh, thank you. I've had some have a historical commission meeting tomorrow and an HCOG meeting next week on Thursday. We did have a, the North State Deal Meeting last week. I'll report on that at the next meeting, but the the exciting thing is that the four-hour closures are done on 101 at Last Chance Grade. And I actually took a motorcycle ride with a couple guys up to Crescent City, and it was was nice to be able to get through there in less than, even less than a half an hour. I mean, I think going one way, we were stopped for about five minutes, and on the other way coming back, we hit it right about the time the light turned green and got right through, so. We actually spent more time in Clamath at that closure than the Last Chance Grade. So it's nice to be able to make that trip in a timely manner again. And there, the work is progressing, and the alternatives are gonna be have a meeting on that and hopefully get some some sense of where they're going and start the environmental for that portion, so. And that's all I have to report now, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. The other Mike, Mike Losi?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting on September the 26th. I'm sorry, on August 26th. And under the consent calendar, the board authorized the installation of two electric vehicle charging stations at the airport. And that's part of the microgrid project that has been ongoing. State grants them out to about $24,000 with about $55,000 allocated in the general funds for that project. The board approved 2020 Power Source Disclosure, which is submitted to the California Energy Commission every year. And it outlines the annual energy purchases and from where those purchases are made. So if you're interested, you can go online to RCA and take a look and see where the breakdown is of that we get all of the energy that is is used. The board received a report on the status of wave energy and what that possible source of energy would be forthcoming, or if it is. Right now, it doesn't look like that's gonna be any anytime soon. It's going to be a lot of research and examination before it can become a reality on the on the West Coast here. We also received a budget update, which shows the sales of electricity up about 8%. But wholesale costs to RCA increased about 11%. We also received a report on offshore wind energy, that project, which is very promising, and it is moving forward. And we had a discussion about our future Zoom, our future meetings, probably going to continue by Zoom, maybe discussing a hybrid type of meeting. And that was about it. I will have a LAFCO meeting coming up, I believe, next month. That's it. Oh, one other thing. I'm really happy to hear that the police department is going to get at two new cars. Those car, those police cars are just a, it's, they're disgusting. I've had more citizens ask me, when are you gonna get rid of those cars? They they look terrible. So I'm I'm glad to hear that. It's a move in the right direction. We might even need more than just the two to be replaced. That's my two cents worth.
All right, thanks, Jeremy.
Well, because of our delayed council meeting today, I actually had a FBIT meeting this afternoon. So I have fresh in my mind, ready to report. The the FBIT board wants to start out by thanking the city and the city manager and the finance director for their support and the time that they've spent helping us kind of navigate some past year auditing roadblocks. And they did approve to do a six-year audit, catch-up, and employ Anderson Lucas Somerville and Borges, a local accounting firm, to do that work. They're looking at payroll and the goal to fill the new executive director's position. They're contemplating around the first of January, but what they did approve today was a three-month extension of the interim executive director's role as FBIT director, and then revisit that at the end of the next three months. Danny Kelly has been doing a good job for us in coordinating time with the city manager with the FBIT president and and other board members. And he's working on a proposal of different options to navigate how we're gonna move forward. Our our president, Emily Holman, is on the on the call tonight, and I have to tell you, she's doing a great job, lots of energy. Outside of just board meetings, she's really putting her heart and soul into her role, and I want to acknowledge that and appreciate her. The the treasurer discussed salary versus hourly as one of the ways to kind of curb our expenditures. And so that's a conversation that we're gonna put on our next meeting's agenda, because it was session item only, to go further into how to best serve the business community at the most affordable rate possible and kind of start really fine-tuning our executive director's role, our executive director's job description, and then how we want to interface with the city, with the chamber, and with the business community moving forward. Also want to have another somewhat of a workshop slash meeting slash direction from the council as far as what you see FBIT looking like moving forward. Direction from the council as far as what you see FBIT looking like moving forward. But I think that will come with Danny Kelly's final analysis. Lastly, I'm sad to say that the decision's been made to cancel Apple Harvest. Both at the Clinton Insight and at the downtown locations. They. Just felt like the gatherings would would compromise people with COVID. So at this point, I want to encourage all the locals to support Clinton's. And go enjoy your cider and your apples and your fresh vegetables and produce. But as far as hayrides and and gathering of that day, they're going to have to postpone one more year. Downtown has decided to take a wait-and-see approach about Halloween. So that's something that we'll report back on next month. And then they just started the conversation about what they want to do for downtown and the other. Other merchant districts regarding Christmas and Santa letters versus a phone booth that you can call Santa. And other decorations downtown and so forth. So there's a lot happening right now. It feels like it's moving slow because we're trying to. Be intentional with the direction that FBIT's going. Which is really good. But at the same time, we want to see more progress made and we would love to get some more feedback from the council on. On exactly how you see FBIT's role moving forward. Besides that, I haven't had a parking right commission meeting recently, but. I have seen the guys working hard on the medians, which I really appreciate. And then wanted to give a shout out to the community from last week's milk can game. I think it was great to see the support of the Collins family for the the injury that happened to one of their kids there. And the support from both sides of the bridge was just overwhelming on Facebook. I thought that was really, really cool. His dad was a husky, so I'm sure that had something to do with the red and blue coming together. And then this week, I just want to let everybody know that it's homecoming week. At Fortuna High, I've got a senior, she's coaching the boys cheerleaders. And there's Thursday Night Football this week. There's going to be a Friday homecoming. Think there's going to be a parade, but I'm not sure. But I do know that they're going to have all the lip sync activities and powder puff cheerleading and all that stuff. Outside at the bleachers, so nobody has to miss the football game to go rushing into demon gym. Enjoy your time there and mask up, stay safe and have fun. That's it.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. Tammy.
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot to report, but I do from the Humboldt Transit Authority. A hydrogen flow cell bus will be transported up here from Oakland tomorrow to try out in our area. That's a zero admission bus. They're starting to look into some of the zero admission vehicles that they will eventually have to switch all to. That's all I have to report on that meeting. And then I I kind of wanted a little update if. If there's a time, maybe chief could tell us when the remodel would start at the police station or whether that even has a date yet. And how long until we get those grants to get those police cars?
Want me to take that, chief?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter which one, Merritt, you can go ahead.
No, that's fine. Go go ahead, go ahead, chief.
You know, I, Tammy, I or I I just, I. There's a lot right now that we are trying to get updated on as far as a timeline and it's really not on city staff's behalf. It's. You know, basically just some further planning and questions that the city manager and I are trying to get answered at this point. So I don't know, there was some dialogue today. Merritt, do you want to go into that a little bit further or?
Yeah, our our consultant working on the police facility, they've actually had some COVID-related issues and they've had some employment-related issues. And so they proposed a new schedule today, which would have us breaking ground in spring, so. And that they think they can beat that schedule. And so, you know, given the higher-end climate, given the pandemic related issues where. It, you know, the project has been delayed somewhat, but we are recalibrating our schedule and we expect to be able to have groundbreaking in the spring. And so I've been staying in close communication involving the police and informed some of the design team from the police, the sergeants and others, what's been happening. So it it has been delayed somewhat, but it is moving forward. And then the police car grant, I didn't see a date. I just signed. The letters acknowledging the receipt today, but you know, I think that would probably, I think those usually take a couple months to see the funds come through for this. So not too long. And it, you know, the timeline and ordering ordering those cheap day could probably tell you how long it takes from the time that we get to find the funding to order them.
I I mean, it's it's difficult to say just because last year we ran into kind of the same thing that. I anticipate that we're going to run into this year with, you know, just, you know, things being hard to get. It's it's ranged from the vehicles to other equipment and, you know, the standard line that we're kind of. Given is that due to COVID nineteen, there is a delay in 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 shipping and receiving. So, you know, really, my my direction and and kind of where I'm going is I try to get on top of these things and get the paperwork out. In front of everybody else as soon as I possibly can and and the hopes that that will accelerate the process. And will be beneficial to the city of Fortuna, but it's just really hard to say at this point.
Thank you.
That it, Tammy?
That's it.
Okay. Been kind of quiet, which doesn't hurt my feelings any right now. I understand the homecoming parade is going to be Friday at one o'clock. And they are not having the parade on football night, so that's what I know about that. And I'm hoping to get Merritt's evaluation forms to you guys this week and having a closed session on the twentieth, if that isn't pushing everyone too hard. And so I'll have Buffy or Sienna pull the council for a special meeting for us to go over our papers after they're filled out before the twentieth. And other than that, that's about it for me as well. So. We do have a closed session tonight, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to section five four nine five six point eight of the government code. The vacant lot by the Monday Club, negotiating parties are the city manager Merritt Perry for the city of Fortuna. And RACISM as the negotiating party for the lot, under negotiation price in terms of payment. So does anyone from the public comment before we adjourn to closed session? I see no hands, so would someone like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second.
All right, we'll give everybody a minute to switch the meeting over to Merritt and say night to all of those who are not making us for this portion.